This conference will now be recorded.
Give my wallet.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, evening council. Members of the board, excuse me very much, put on my other hat. Very good, thank you, members of the board. I call this meeting to a order at 7:00 PM, late 20:22. There is a quorum present, all council, all board members are present. Of the zoning board of adjustment. Item two is consider for the zoning board adjustment meeting. There's a background, someone have their mic on in the audience? Oh, and that's on virtual, if you have your mic on on virtual, please mute it, please. Thank you. Uh, back to the minutes, board.
I'll make a motion to approve the March seven, twenty twenty-two minutes as presented.
Motion is made to approve the March first, twenty twenty. To, or excuse me, March seventh, twenty twenty-two minutes. As presented is, I'll say, there is the second. All in favor, signify by aye, raise your hand. Thank you, motion passes, five zero. Action items, three point one, hold a public hearing and consider a variance request from section four point, three point six of chapter fourteen of the zoning ordinance to allow for a size increase to twenty-eight hundred square feet, two-story pool house with a four hundred and forty-eight square foot balcony. Total thirty-two hundred and forty-eight square feet from already approved three hundred and eighty-four square foot, one-story supply shed that is being built in front of the primary structure on a residential lot described as Lot twenty-four, Block four, U-Wide Estates within the city of Hassel, Texas, more commonly known as twenty-two sixteen Virginia Lane. Mr. Tedford. Yes, you'll go ahead and approach the podium. Mister. Mister Tedford, do you swear or affirm that the testimony and evidence you are about to give this board is the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes, sir.
Very good, please proceed.
Got a few binders I'm gonna give out to.
Yes.
Thank you, Chairman, members of the board. Essentially, this is a variance request from the applicant and homeowner of twenty-two sixteen Virginia Lane, he is present tonight. Back in early twenty-one, he was building a swimming pool and he needed a building that would support that pool. He was considering it as a, as a pump house and a storage shed. The size of that building was the three hundred and eighty. Three hundred and eighty-four square foot building. The placement of that building was actually forward of his house, so he had to apply for a variance for that building. We do have an ordinance that says you cannot place a accessory building forward of your, of your home. Back in March twenty-one, he applied for the variance and he was approved the variance by the zoning board of adjustments. Since that time, Mr. Nolan, Jason Nolan here, he actually constructed the building to be a little bit bigger, or considerably bigger than what was allowed by the board. So the. The staff report actually says it's a twenty-eight hundred square foot building. I know Mr. Nolan has some objections to that size, he'll explain that here when he speaks. It also includes a balcony area of four hundred and forty-eight square feet. There's also an outdoor kitchen. Included with this building, based on our ordinance, any, any area of building that is covered with a, with a roof area, more than twenty-four inches is, projects from the wall of, or a supporting structure of the building is, is actually square footage for that building. We do have an ordinance that says you cannot have an accessory building that's greater than three thousand square feet. From the, the calculations that I put towards this building, everything under roof was over three thousand square feet, that includes the ground floor of fourteen hundred square feet and I believe there was a second floor that was that same size. Mr. Nolan may actually provide some more information that, that size may be brought down a little bit from, from his testimony. So he is actually in the middle of building this building. We, we did provide a stopper order on the building until we figure out if he can obtain this variance tonight. There is not a, there's not an active permit on the building right now. So the stopper order is in place until the board decides if this variance is approved and then we'll have to work towards obtaining that permit. The city of Hassel prohibits accessory buildings located in the front of the residence. In this case, zoning board of adjustments has already granted a variance for the supply shed to alleviate the applicant's hardship. Namely, the inability to locate the shed behind the main house because of the detrimental effect of change in drainage pattern on the property. Following the grant of the variance, the applicant has constructed the building eight times larger than the authorized supply shed to be used for purpose never discussed with the original proceeding. All the, all which was done without a permit, contrary to the public interest. Where the ordinance is not observed. As already stated previously, is approved variance from the board of adjustments, the three hundred and eight, three hundred and eight square foot pump house did meet the spirit of the ordinance. However, the grossly increased size of the building does not meet the spirit of the ordinance and would impose a significantly greater visual impact on the property. A special use. So essentially, if this building is over three thousand square feet, a specific use permit would be required, that would be a separate process than what we're doing tonight. So. I'll entertain any questions you may have, also the applicants here to speak. Yeah, there are quite a bit of, bit of information here in the notebook, I can kind of go through these one on, one by one here. This really all started in May of twenty twenty. Mr. Nolan contacted me and basically from his words, he, he wanted to construct a koi pond. That eventually evolved into constructing a swimming pool. Finally provided a site plan, had the building on there. The previous plan director oversaw the, that variance going through board of adjustments last time in, in March. Who did apply for the swimming pool permit. There was a plan review that was sent to Mr. Nolan. It did say that the, the permit would only cover the swimming pool and related equipment. The building on the permit would be permitted separately. Also, please note that an accessory building shall not be located forward of the primary building on the lot. Please submit a new site plan without the building, so that was a plan review that was sent to him back on December twenty-one, twenty twenty. And we had the proceedings that went on to the board of adjustments. In your notebook there, there, there is a staff report that went to ZBA, March first, twenty-one. The minutes are in there as well. There's a plan review requesting for the payment for the swimming pool. There was a, there was an inspection done on the pool. At that time, Mr. Nolan did ask if the pump house could be placed on the same permit as the pool. I did inform him that since the pool, the pump house was an integral part of the pool that we would add that to that same permit. But also needed the correct plans to be submitted. I did receive a phone call from Mr. Nolan asking if there, if a secondary decking could be placed inside the building that was approved for storage. Did not know that this was gonna be a second story to the building. Hadn't known that, I would have asked for plans for, for that secondary storage or the decking inside, or for the building. I did do a electrical underground inspection on the pool. So this was actually a critical oversight on my, my part for, for actually not catching that the foundation of the building was, which was ready for inspection at that same time. I did conduct that inspection at that time. Had I measured it, I probably would have found out that the size of that foundation was considerably larger than what was actually permitted. There was communication that went out to Mr. Nolan that, uh, that do not proceed with this plan until plans have, this project's plans have been submitted. February twenty-third of twenty-two, a stopper order was issued. All, all progress of the building was halted at that point. Did issue a notice of violation on March twenty-eighth, twenty-two. And. There is a, a few text messages in this, in this packet for you to review if you'd like. Come back and forth between Jason and myself. Four-four twenty-two, second variance application for the bigger building, both submitted. And then the, the new construction plans for the bigger building. Were, were provided. Part of that information here, if anybody has any questions on this, I'll finally answer them.
Or do you have any questions for Mr. Tedford?
Just, can you tell us what tab the text messages are that you're talking about?
What was, would I, what was that a question again, I didn't hear that?
The tab where the text messages are, but I guess it's tab fourteen.
Yeah. Four, not fourteen.
I had a question on.
Oh. Okay, sorry.
On tab seven, when it, when, if there's a request for, when the pump house is added and there's requests for detailed, additional detailed plans, was any, were any detailed plans submitted at that, at that point?
Not at that point, it was later on in the process that plans were actually decided.
Okay, and then also, you said secondary decking, that does not automatically mean secondary storage, that's just, it could be a.
Not to me, it didn't.
Like an added area.
Since Mr. Nolan already had an approval from a board to build a one-story sixteen by twenty-four foot building. I was assuming that it was within that building that he was gonna place the deck.
Sorry, and then on tab eight, when the outdoor kitchen, I was listening to the description, were, were plans submitted for that at that time?
No.
Hey Mike, I've got a question on section four, just for my clarification on the drawings that look like it's on page nine of eleven. I'm thinking, is that the, I'm looking at this picture here. Was that the proposed pool, pump house and is it, and the actual residence?
Is this right?
Yeah, that, so my question is, the, the middle picture on the left, is that, was that the proposed pump house, storage?
Yes, this was the.
And the primary residence?
This was the proposed building that was approved by ZBA in March.
Okay, and that's the primary residence on the right?
Correct.
Thank you.
I have a question, Mike, on section seven and eight referring. When did they submit the plan? If they submit them on those day at that time, when did they submit?
The plans for this project or the new?
When you told him on July second, twenty twenty-one.
I believe, I just recently received those plans when we first started talking about the, the new variance. I believe that's when I actually received those plans.
When you actually received those plans?
Partly in approximate timeframe.
Okay, I believe that's when they came in, April four, twenty-two. Yes.
So from the original permit that was issued for the first pump house for three hundred and eighty-four square foot until the time that you received the new plans for three thousand two hundred and forty-eight square foot was almost a year or a year and a half?
Part of the time.
I see in section twelve that you gave the notice of violation on March twenty-eighth, that that means you did not receive any new set of plans until after the notice of violation?
Yes.
Is there a contractor that's doing the, the work?
I'm not sure, I, I don't know who's doing the work, to be honest.
Well, very good, board, do you know other questions? Thank you, Mr. Tedford. Mr. Nolan. I'll swear you at this time, Mr. Nolan, do you swear or affirm that the testimony and evidence you're about to present this board is the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, sir.
So help you God.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. All right, please proceed, sir.
So where, where do we start, at the beginning?
Well, start with your, wherever you would like.
Okay, well, I'll, I'll just go through this timeline. Point number one, sounds about right. Point number two, sounds about right. Number three, sounds about right. Number four, sounds right. Five, six, seven, sound correct, so page two. Okay, so there's a, my recollection of this is different. Mike informed me. That he would need to submit detailed plans for the building and pay extra fees with building permit. Did you tell me that in person, from your memory?
Sorry, so the board of adjustments sits as a quasi judicial body. And so what you're doing is you're, you're presenting testimony.
Okay.
To the board. You, if you want to ask Mike questions, you can do that, but it should be after your testimony to the board.
Okay, thanks. So from, from the beginning of the pool building, from what I remember with my conversations with Mike, he said that they were so backed up on permits, because I specifically asked him, I said, do I need to pull a separate permit for the building? And he said that they were so backed up on permits that his plan was just to include the pool house on the pool permit. And I said, okay, well, just let me know what I need to do. I'm at your mercy here, you're, you know, you're helping me do this thing. So at that point, I didn't pull another permit, because Mike specifically told me he was gonna include it on my pool permit.
I got a question before you go forward. At that time, did you let him know that the, that this building was gonna increase in size by this much?
Yeah, so that conversation happened when he came out to inspect my rough-in plumbing, electrical and gas. At that point, he said, hey, this looks bigger than the original building. He said, what is all this stuff? Because I had plumbing, electrical and gas that I was putting in. And I said, I want to make this building bigger than the original building that was approved, what do I need to do? He said, shoot me some elevations, shoot, get me some elevations of the, of what you want to do. And I said, okay. I'll do to that. I'll do to that. I mean, proceed with the inspection. He said, yes, he said, he inspected, he inspected. Plumbing, electrical, um, gas, and then the guy from Metro Code came out and inspected that stuff as well. Because I think Mike red bagged something from my recollection, I think maybe a trench wasn't deep enough. So I worked on some stuff, Metro Code came back out and finished that inspection.
Let me ask a question at this point. Mr. Tedford, did you know that this was evidently so the pool pump building was approved or given permission by the ZBA? Did you know that it was a ZBA approval?
I knew it went through the process, I was kind of disconnected from the process, I really didn't have anything to do with that part of it. Out there on site, I think we, we may have had a discussion, I'm just trying to remember exactly what we discussed. I think if I remember correctly, there was a conversation that said, hey, you know, talking about the size of the building. At that point. I remember. Yes, this was in August, so August sixteen, twenty-one. We did the underground electrical inspection for the pool and the outdoor kitchen. Like I stated here, this was a critical oversight of, of myself for not catching this inspection. It was also an outdoor kitchen. Outdoor kitchen aspect was never permitted with the original permit, but it was added by the owner without permission from the city. That's. That's my recollection of it.
Very good. I'm pleased with it.
Yeah, so my recollection of that conversation was, we talked extensively about what I was doing with that building, we, we discussed exact dimensions. And when it says I didn't have approval, I didn't have permission from the city, that was my fault, because I didn't know that to modify this building, this is the first variance I've ever gotten on a building. I've built commercial buildings in Keller and Fort Worth, and I built my house in Hassle and went through, I talked to Mike every week for a year building my house. And I was talking to him pretty much, probably twice a week, the whole time I was building this pool house. What I didn't realize was that to modify that building, that would have to go back before the zoning board. I didn't know that, I was just working with Mike. And so, yeah, at that point, I mean, dirt work was done, right? It was trenched, I've got all my plumbing, electrical and gas in, he inspected all that, he did a rebar inspection, said the rebar looked good. We even specifically discussed the size of the slab, because I wanted to make sure this building was under the three thousand square foot limit for an accessory building. I told him it was twenty-six by, I think it's twenty-six by fifty-six is the dimensions, so it's eleven, twelve hundred square feet, no, it's twenty-six by sixty, so it's fourteen hundred square feet, which was well under the three thousand square foot limit for an accessory building. We talked about that. That's why he let me proceed pouring the slab, doing the framing. All of this stuff he inspected, so you know, it was just. Just to be, to be candid, I think Mike screwed up, I think I screwed up. I think we didn't, we didn't realize that this needed to go back before you guys, because this isn't my job and I, I just didn't know, I wish I had known, if I could go back in time, I would have brought it back to you guys. But Mike can attest that we were in, I never built a single thing on this building without getting his approval and him inspecting it, so.
I got a quick question, do you have a contractor that's doing all this work, or you doing this yourself?
I'm a contractor.
Okay, so you've done these in other cities, similar type of jobs? When you do it in other cities, don't you have to go full permits and if, if there's any changes in the plans, don't you have to go to the city board there also in full of permit?
You don't always have to resubmit plans, no, I've, I've made changes to buildings if it's, it depends on the inspector.
Well, this, this is a pretty significant change from thirty, three hundred, three hundred and twenty-eight thousand, or three hundred and twenty-eight square foot to three thousand or over three thousand square.
Now, it's not, the square footage is wrong, and I talked to him about that, I'm not sure where those numbers got pulled from, but it's twenty-six by sixty, so it's fourteen hundred square feet. The garage is on one side, which is non-conditioned space, that's where the equipment is. And then there's a twenty-six by twenty area that is conditioned space, so it's five hundred square feet of condition. And then there's about a five hundred square foot outdoor kitchen. So it's, yeah, the, the building's bigger, but you know, the equipment room's still there, there's a small living space, which is within, I even talked to him about that, because I wanted to make sure that the living space was within the code for a secondary living space, right, like a guest house. So he said, as long as it's under five hundred square feet, you should be good, so that's why I made it that size. So, you know, it ended up being fourteen hundred square feet, which, yeah, it's bigger than the original four hundred square feet, but where, where my house is located, it's at the very back of my lot. And it drops off really steep, right behind my house to the west, which is the reason I needed this first variance to begin with. I can't build behind my house due to the drainage and the slope of that. And the engineer that was in that first zoning meeting, he confirmed that, he looked at the, he looked at the drainage, he looked at the tofo mats and he said, yeah, this, he can't build here, he needs to build it here. So my house also sits, you know, if, if this is my lot on, and you're driving up Virginia Lane, so this is west, my house sits at the very back of my lot, but it sits at an angle, it doesn't sit parallel with Virginia Lane. So the pool house is actually, it's behind my house when you're looking at the front of my house, but in relation to Virginia Lane, it does sit a little bit east of my house, but it's not like it's in front of my house, it's actually a little bit behind my house when you're looking at the front of my house. So my house and my pool house are significantly behind my neighbors' houses. My neighbors, my neighbor to the north, Lee, his accessory building is in front of my house, his huge barn's in front of my house. So my house and my accessory building sit further back than every other structure on Virginia Lane. So it's not like I built a big pool house in front of my property, this thing's, this thing is way back there, you can't even see it from the street party. If you're standing in my driveway, I've got a huge row of trees that block my house and the pool house. Really, the only place you can see it from is Bonds Ranch, because I sit at the very top of a hill. But this building's twenty-two feet tall and all the two-story houses on my street are taller than that. I mean, my neighbor on the north side, or no, on the. I mean, my neighbor on the north side, or no, on the, on the east side, his, he built a metal building accessory building last year. His name's Will, twenty-two feet tall, metal R-panel, sits two hundred feet from the street. So it's twice as close to the street as this pool house. And this pool house is going to be, I mean, it's going to be rock, limestone, tongue and groove cedar. It's, it's going to look great. It's going to match my house exactly. So. I think the biggest, yeah, I mean, the biggest problem was that we together were constructing this building to what I thought was according to code for both an accessory building and living space in an accessory building. And then I, at a certain point, he issued me a stop building permit because somebody was giving him massive pushback.
I do have one, one question though, too, back on August sixteenth that goes here on, on, uh, on tab nine, that there was an inspection permit. And that's where I think Mike was talking about on October sixteenth. But that inspection permit actually says the fa- the inspection failed. You provided a copy of that, that the inspection failed?
The MetroCode?
Was that?
The MetroCode inspection?
Yes.
For the S straps in the showers?
Yeah, it actually showed that the inspection had failed at that point.
Right, I fixed the S straps and texted the fixtures to the inspector, which is what he asked for. I, the MetroCode inspector.
This one doesn't say anything about the S code. Maybe Mike asked your question. This has the, you know, basically on eight sixteen, the swimming pool, bond ground, the plumbing and the rough end. Um, actually said that the inspection failed with MetroCode. And I don't see any correction or would he have been given, would he have been given a secondary inspection permit that actually said that it passed that? At nine?
Okay. Um, yeah, I'm showing that it did fail the MetroCode inspection. I don't have any record of this passing that inspection. It was never called back in. I can check with MetroCode to see if they ever, if they recorded this. We, as to say, we did not report that as a, as a passing inspection.
Okay, because I saw that fail and then you turn to the next one inspection, which is on tab ten. It, and it, that was almost two years later. Or a year and a half later. So I'm just curious what happened between August the sixteenth and January tenth of twenty twenty-two?
It was regular communication and building and inspection. So right after this MetroCode inspection. He, the guy failed it for the S straps in the showers and the pressure test on the gas line. I put the S straps in the showers, put the pressure test on the gas line with the pressure, pressurized gauge, which is still under pressure. Uh, took pictures of those, sent them to the MetroCode guy. And that's all he asked for. So I, I was actually, I never knew that this failed. I, I thought that this one was good to go because the week after that, we scheduled concrete. So he came out and did a rebar inspection. And a final inspection on that plumbing and electrical before concrete went in. So he showed up, Mike showed up, inspected my rebar, inspected my plumbing. The only thing he said at that point was you need plastic around your pipes. So wrap those pipes in plastic and you're good to go to pour concrete. So he, he was there when my concrete guys were there. We were about to pour concrete. He inspected that. I said, okay, so we're good to pour concrete. He said, yep, you're good to pour concrete. So we poured concrete. And then after that, he inspected my steel. He inspected my wood framing. I called him a couple of times, asking about this balcony because I was wondering about what kind of material we could use on the balcony railing. Because I was thinking about glass, I was thinking about wire. And he said, if you're going to use wire, you have to do four inch facing on the wire. Because I was talking to my steel guy about it. So. I mean, we, we were talking about this whole thing regularly. I was, and I was getting the green light to build this thing for a year. So, you know, here we are. So at this point, I think the the main concern that I saw in here was the size and whether it's a significant visual impact on the street. Well, the size is fourteen hundred square feet with attic space. It does have a balcony. The size that's in the packet is not quite right. It's eight by forty, so it's a three hundred and twenty square foot balcony, eight foot by forty foot. The two-story does not go over the whole building. It's not over the outdoor kitchen. So the second floor, which is just attic space, that's storage, is a thousand square feet, but it's just storage. Um, so true square footage, we've got fourteen hundred on the bottom and then a three hundred and twenty square foot balcony. So we got seventeen twenty total square foot.
Okay, I have a question real quick because you said about seventeen twenty and I'm writing things down frantically. So you had earlier said fifteen sixty and then another twenty-six by sixty, then the five hundred living space. So what, I mean, what is the actual square footage of the seventeen twenty, the entire square footage of the, of the, the building? And then twenty-two foot elevation?
Yeah, the slab is twenty-six by sixty. Okay, so that's the actual building size. The balcony is, is cantilever. Okay, so there's, there's no slab underneath it. It's a cantilever balcony and is eight by forty. So if the, if you're counting that in the square footage, which Mike told me you do count that, even though it's not conditioned space. Or even enclosed space, so then, then the total would be seventeen twenty. So at this point, this thing sits about thirty feet from my house. So once I was issued a stop building permit. I was like, okay, what's, what's going on, Mike? What, what do we do here? I built it up to this point. How do we fix this, right? It wasn't like I had a curtain over this thing. I mean, Mike was on my property every other week for a year while I was building it. So it came as a shock to me that I got a stop building permit after I was getting the green light all the way. But once I got that stop building permit, I stopped building and I immediately started talking with Mike and Gary. I got to talk to Gary quite a bit. Um, Gary was trying to help me figure out what to do with this thing. So the options that we came up with are, okay, if I connect it to my house, then it's no longer an accessory building and it's no longer in front of my house further east. Uh, so that's one option. The other option is I can submit plans to add on to my house further east, forty feet, which would put my house further east than the pool house. So those are both two options that would be according to code, but that wouldn't change the way the pool house looked. The pool house is built to code. Um, it is within, well within the size limit for an accessory building. So I would prefer to not have to spend a lot of extra money attaching it to my house. I think it would make, in terms of visual appearance, attaching my house to the pool house is going to make it look like a strip center. I mean, because they're, they're right next to each other. Right now, they're two different structures that are both going to look good. But if I build a solid thirty-foot wall between them, my house is going to be two hundred and twenty feet wide and forty feet deep. It's really not going to look good. Um, I did submit those plans uh, to Mike and he made, he marked them up a little bit with some things that I would need to change. Like I've got a, I've got a garage door, an overhead door on the pool house that faces, and there's, there's another gray area because my house doesn't face east. It faces northeast. So technically, that overhead door faces northeast, so it's not a front-facing door. It, it's at a forty-five for front-facing. And I think you are allowed to have a forty-five facing overhead door. So that's a point that we could talk about, but that was on there. And then, um, he also said I would have to enclose my outdoor kitchen because the connection between the house and the pool house would have to be conditioned space. Um, so there were some reasons, there, there were a lot of reasons why connecting it just seemed, uh, really like it would be difficult, not to mention they sit at two, somewhere between two and three feet different elevation. So I'd have a two to three foot step down in my house. My sewer lines and my septic lines run right in between them, as well as all my sprinkler controllers. So I would have to rerun all my sprinklers and my septic. So it would be, it would be a major, major issue to connect the house to the pool house. Um, so at this point, my, really, my only two options are to get the variance approved or to build onto my house forty feet east with a new master suite, which would basically, my house sits. Uh, so my house sits basically, my front door points northeast, okay? So, so if this is north, my house sits about like this. I would have to add on a master suite forty feet east, which will come off my house at a forty-five degree angle, which would be okay. It would, it would look a lot better than connecting the house to the pool house. But this would literally just be a massive addition. We're talking a thousand square foot addition to my house just to make the pool house even with my house so that I don't have to tear it down. So. And, and once again, that doesn't change what the pool house looks like, which it's going to look good. I mean, it's, it's going to be really nice material. It's going to match my house perfectly. So. So that's kind of where we are on the, on the pool house. I just finished the pool today, filled it with water. Got to get the meter back, so.
Board, do you have any questions? And so that, if you would address the chair, then I'll acknowledge you. That way, we don't have people speaking up at the same time prior to you addressing a question. Very good. So Board, do you have any questions?
Here, Halsey.
Please, be chairman, Halsey.
What percent of the pool house is completed at this?
It's. The exterior is fully constructed and home wrapped, windows, doors, roof, insulation. The equipment room's fully done because all my equipment's in there for my pool. The pool's running. Um, it, the whole thing's framed, all the plumbing and everything's wrapped in. So at this point, we're looking at, you know, putting the facade material over the home wrap and whatever finish out I have to do on the inside. So, but it's, it's fully constructed with home wrap and windows, doors, roof, insulation.
Board, any other questions?
Is that like seventy-five percent, eighty percent done? We had to give a minute?
I would say seventy.
Things from Mike, though.
You have questions from Mr. Thatcher?
I believe so. Um, I was just curious where the thirty-two, forty-eight square foot comes in versus under two thousand?
So the footprint of the, of the slab was fourteen hundred square feet. I thought from the drawings that the, that that went two stories, so that would be double, so twenty-eight. Then with the added balcony, that would bring it over three thousand.
But the two story is not over the outdoor kitchen? And so, and it's just attic space?
Let me ask you, this second story you have, is that livable space?
No, it's just a big open room. It's deck for storage. It's got plywood, but it's.
So it's a separate floor?
It's a separate floor.
And you got stair casing up to it or some sort?
Staircase to it, yeah, but it's not conditioned space. It's just a big, big storage. Essentially, it's a way to get to the balcony. Plus, we're going to use.
But it's a two-story building?
Yeah.
Very good.
So you could convert that, though, into usable space if you wanted?
You could, yeah, but I don't have an attic. That's one problem with my house. The, if you look at my house, it's, I've only got about two or three foot of headroom on my house, so I have no attic. So we really need an attic. So my two options were build an accessory building for storage or build an attic on this building, which is what fit.
So I get grounded in this. I'm, I'm kind of looking at this and I'm, I got different square footage calculations and things of that nature. So what you originally submitted to the ZBA, the very beginning, is that this, that's that small building to the left? That I'm looking at, that's what you presented?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And that's a total of three hundred and eighty-four square feet under roof?
That's what the plan shows, yes.
Well, it's, it's, the enclosed space is that size, plus you've got the porch. And the porch was going to be eight by twenty-six. So about another two hundred square feet on the porch. So it's going to be between five and six hundred square feet on the original building. All the building materials stay the same, the, except the front of the pool house is going to be solid limestone on the bottom floor. And then gray hardy on the top floor to match my house. That's the way my house is. And then same thing, windows and doors are black, frame, uh, double pane. And then tongue and groove on all the eaves, all the overhangs are tongue and groove.
So let me, let me ask this. So you submitted to ZBA a three hundred and eighty-four square foot plan. Is that a picture, this picture right here?
Mm-hmm.
And you had dimensions on it?
Mm-hmm. Uh, the dimensions were on the site plan.
On the site plan?
Mm-hmm.
And did that single out the enclosed space or, or was it in just, you know, a block of sort?
I can't remember what that original site plan looked like, but it was, I think the building was sixteen by twenty-six, if I recall correctly.
Okay.
Sixteen by twenty-four plus a eight-foot overhang porch, which is in that elevation right there. Okay.
That was not shown on the site plan?
Okay.
Or, okay.
This was, this was part of the, that submittal too, though. So I guess I didn't include the porch on the site plan, but it was on these plans that were with that.
So you got this, you got the zoning board of adjustments approved, construction of this specific structure. So you went to work. How soon after you went to work did you decide you wanted to make this a lot bigger?
Pretty much right away. When I was doing the dirt work, before any work was done, Mike came out and I ran this by him. And he said, okay, what's the size? How big are you going with this? I said twenty-six by sixty. I think originally, to be fully honest, I said twenty-six by fifty-six. That was the original size. It ended up being twenty-six by sixty. But when I talked to Mike, we calculated it. Okay, well, accessory building has to be under three thousand square feet. So I said, okay, twenty-six by sixty, we're at whatever that comes out to, fourteen hundred square feet, so we're good. Said, yep, I think we're good. Just give me some updated elevation. At some point, I did get Mike the updated elevations well before March of this year. I did get them to him at some point. So that's kind of, and we just kept, we just kept going. But before I even poured concrete, I mean, when we were doing plumbing and electrical rough end inspections, I told him exactly what I was doing.
Did you provide any plans?
No.
Any drawings?
Uh, I did get him elevations at one point.
Before you started construction?
Before I, yes, before I built the actual structure. It wasn't before I did my rough end inspection.
So miss, Mike? So he's out there, he's got a zoning board of adjustment approved structure to build that and only that. And y'all are in the conversation and Mr. Nolan asks, well, how big of a building can I build? Now I want to go back to. Now I wanna go back to, did you, were you aware, I understand that you weren't involved in this prior ZBA?
Yes.
Were you aware that these plans or this structure that was approved to be built? Mr. Nolan was given, was approved by the zoning board of adjustment?
I would say, uh, I, I haven't seen the, the new plans for what's out there now until, till April. There is no permit on this building as it says right now.
Did you know that this original structure, when you're, so Mr. Nolan states that. He gets a, an approval from ZBA and, I don't know, week later, you start constructing. I don't know what that time period is in the ZBA until you started moving dirt, week, a month?
It might have been two or three months.
Okay, couple months. And so, Mr. Nolan decides, well, you know what, I wanna build a bigger building now. And there was evidently a conversation of, how big a building can I build? And I know generically, it's three thousand square feet as an accessory building, uh, in our ordinance. And evidently, that's your reply. Did you know that the, my question is, did you know that ZBA governed the size of this structure?
Not at that point, I didn't, um, I didn't know, I didn't know actually what ZBA stated until I watched the video recently.
Okay. Then, thank you, and Mike.
During this process, you are allowed to cross-examine witnesses, I didn't want to foreclose that, I wanted you to finish your testimony first. So if you have questions for Mike, that you'd like for him to answer under oath, you can do that now.
I mean, I, I think we, we both know what happened. It was, I think, I think we both know that it was a little bit of both of us not doing this the way that it was supposed to be done, but it wasn't. It wasn't because I wasn't trying to do it the right way. I mean, Mike can attest that since I moved on that property, before I moved on, since I bought the property. When I submitted plans to build my house, Mike's been awesome. I mean, I, I, he's the only inspector I've ever met that I can text him or call him, and he answers my texts or my calls. If I've got questions on what spacing I need on something, or whether I need joist tangers or hurricane straps, or wrapping pipe. Or what kinda insulation, or what kinda wind bracing, or, I mean, from start to finish, he's always been, he's always been great, he's always been awesome to communicate with. If I need an inspection the next day, he'll be there, you know, I, I haven't experienced that in other cities, so Mike's been great. Um, I thought I was building this pool house with Mike's approval from start to finish. Mike can attest that before I did every major step, I called him, I wanted him to get eyes on it and make sure it looked good. I'm talking trenching, how big do the beams need to be for this building? Okay, twelve by twenty-four, what spacing do I need my rebar? Eighteen inch on center, do I need half inch rebar or three-eighths? Well, three-eighths will be okay, I went with half inch because I wanted a strong slab, he inspected the rebar, he inspected my plumbing. So, you know, I've, I've been in constant communication with him, I think, I just didn't know the correct process to increase the size of this building. I thought I was building an accessory building that was within code, well within code, overkill. I mean, this is steel construction, awesome slab, overkill on everything, over, I just, you know, that's the way I build stuff. And I wanted him to get eyes on everything, so, um, no, I think, I think we're good, I mean, we've, I've gone over this with Mike now fifty times, so. I think we're up.
Chairman, Halsey?
Yeah, please.
I guess, from what I'm hearing based upon what you've had, Halsey, and what I've heard from Mike too, um, Mike was not at that original zoning board of adjustment meeting. And it seems like that there seemed to be a, uh, some type of video or something, but you were at that zoning board adjustment. Was it stated in there since this is in front of your house that you, you would tend to be the one that would have to know that if it was, you were making a change to it? That the zoning board only approved that three hundred and eighty-four at that point?
There was, there was no conversation about what the process would be if I wanted to make changes to that building. They, they told me exactly what was approved in that ZBA meeting, but there was, at, at that point, at that point, I didn't foresee in that meeting. I wanna make this thing bigger, right, because in my mind, I'm thinking, this is the only spot on my property realistically.
Excuse me just a minute, his question is, did you know it was a three hundred and eighty-four square foot building?
Yes, I knew that that's what the ZBA approved in that.
Okay, that's, that's his question, that's right. Please go ahead if you have further questions.
Mm-hmm.
I'm sorry, I didn't have it on, but what I was saying, you, you, that's what was approved was three hundred and eighty-four because it's not so much as excessive, the accessory building. Accessory building, if it was behind your front part of your lot, if, if my understanding is correct, from the ordinance, if it was behind the front. You have the accessory building code of ordinance also too, but since you had to bring it to the ZBA because it was in front of your house. You only were approved a certain portion, not even the porch, is my understanding.
Mm-hmm.
Just the enclosed built.
Mm-hmm.
I think that was sort of explained, was that explained to you, the reason you had to bring it in front of the ZBA?
The first time?
The first time.
Now, the reason the first time was because you can't build any accessory building closer to the street than your house, right? So that's why I brought it originally, was because I needed permission, now this is, I'm, I'm explaining to you the way I understood it. Now I know the full, the full picture of what should have been done. But back then, my understanding was, I need a ZBA meeting to approve an accessory structure further east of my house. Because I've got severe drainage and slope limitations on the very back of my lot. But my house is darn near at the back of my lot, okay, so I don't have a lot of room behind my house. I've got four hundred and fifty feet between my house and the street, but I don't have really any buildable space behind my house. So I was thinking, I need a variance to approve building and accessory building closer to the street than my house, because this is the only place I can build it. Once that got approved, once that location got approved, I did not know that I had to bring changes to that building back to the ZBA. I thought the ZBA had approved, you, you have a hardship due to the fact that you've got nowhere else to build an accessory building. So this location's approved, and I ran these changes by Mike, and Mike was giving me the green light to build this larger building. I didn't know I needed to bring this back to the ZBA, and I guess Mike didn't either. And so that was, that's what caused the whole problem, is that I was building, he's approving. Neither one of us knew that we needed to bring it back here until, I guess, somebody complained? Which, I don't, I don't know, I actually, I don't know the details about what happened or why I was issued a stop building permit seventy percent of the way through this building. I still don't know that, nobody's actually told me that, other than that, hey, somebody's pushing back on this, I have to issue this, because according, yeah. I don't, I don't wanna throw Mike under the bus, but his exact words to me when he came on my property that day and issued me a stop building permit were, my job's on the line here, I have to issue a stop building permit, so.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask Mike a question?
Please, go ahead.
Mike, all of these things that Mr. Nolan doesn't know the answers to, would they have been resolved definitively if? Plans had been submitted pursuant to an application for a building permit?
I think so, I think if I had the full picture of what was about to be constructed out there. That would have triggered me to look into more of the ZBA approvals, and we probably would have stopped it right there.
I have a question in that, you are a contractor, you build commercial buildings. And being such, you have the experience of having to get permits and submit full plans. Foundational, structural plans, roofing plans, uh, mechanical, electrical, et cetera, drainage site, the whole works. And so you know it's a formal process. What made you think this was any different? And also, given that, I mean, you're having to comply, submit the plans, and all of which is driven by any given city's ordinances. That to get a variance from an ordinance is a big deal, so what made you think otherwise?
Um. I, I'm not aware of how big of a deal it is to get a variance, this is the first one I've ever gotten. So, if it is a big deal, then I appreciate first variance, but I assume that variance just happen all the time for various reasons, but. Um, residential building and commercial building, in terms of the plans, are very different, I mean, the-
Well, I know that they're very different, but the requirements are the same.
In my experience, they haven't been, like, on my commercial buildings I've built, I've had to submit MEP plans. When I built my house, I didn't have to submit MEP plans, I just had to submit kind of a rough. Uh, I'll put it this way, the MEP plan was kind of one plan with the electrical, mechanical, and plumbing, but there were no, there wasn't a detailed MEP plan.
Right, I, I'm familiar with the residential MEP plans, but it's all on one plan, it's on one sheet of paper.
Yeah, it's a lot less detailed on the residential.
But it does cite, it has the, uh, notes and spec to call out what's being, uh, installed.
Mm-hmm.
Can I make a comment?
Please.
I, as the only person that was, I act, I actually moved to approve your variance back in March, I was the only one to go there, and I, I'm reading over the, the motion. And it was to approve the variance request with the condition that it be located, constructed and location shown. On the attached site plan and in compliance with the attached building elevations and exterior building materials, so I know it's in the same spot, I know it has the same materials. But the, the concern I have, and I do sympathize too, is that the elevations did change, and that was not what was approved at the, the variance.
Yeah, and it was my mistake to run this by Mike for approval, rather than coming back to you guys. Now I know that, but when I was doing that every other week for the last year, and getting green light, green light, green light. Your plumbing looks good, your rebar looks good, you can pour the slab, literally like I'm saying, okay, so we're good to pour the slab, Mike? Yep, you're good to pour the slab, okay, so I'm good to go to the next step, yep, you're good. So, that, that's where the confusion was, was I thought that he was speaking for the city. Where now I know that he couldn't do that in this case, because this was a variance. So that, that's where the whole problem started, which was fourteen months ago.
Let me, uh-
I just didn't know it.
Uh, I'd like to move along, does that conclude your presentation?
Uh-
Do you have any other presentation materials and not particularly discussions right here? We got a, not, an item for discussion, uh, but I would-
I think the last thing I'd like to say is that, you know, there are two ways to make this thing not require a variance and be built. To code without a variance, which are connecting it to my house or extending my house further east. Neither of which changed the pool house, the pool house is already there. To me, to me, this was an honest mistake made by two people. And a variance to finish it as is without another two hundred thousand dollar addition and remodel onto my house. It's, it's almost like more is not always better, and I know that we didn't do this the right way, I totally realize that now. I didn't realize it a year ago, but now I realize it, which is why we're here. And so, another two hundred thousand dollar addition and remodel to make this thing to code and not require this variance, seems like. More construction, more eyesore, um, I don't necessarily think, uh, solves anything. But, I'll, I'll do what I need to do, but the reason I'm here is to avoid having to build more to connect these two structures. Or add onto my house further east forty feet, none of which you can see from the street. It would really just be, as you drive up my house, what are you gonna see, right? So, that's kinda where I'm at with it, that's why I'm here, is to try to prevent having to just add more onto something. That everybody here is saying they're concerned about how big it is, well, I'm, I'm about to have to add more onto it if I don't get this variance to make it apply to code. So, that's, that's where I'm at.
Does that conclude your presentation?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Nolan.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I do wanna ask Mike one more question as a follow-up to that. Mike, do you agree with Mr. Nolan's characterizations of you, of your conversations with him? That you were in agreement, lockstep with every one of his decisions that he made?
So with my disconnect from what was approved by the board of adjustments back in March twenty-one. Um, I think there was some communication issues, um, there, I didn't have a full understanding of what ZBA actually approved. Um, I know at one point, we were discussing, um, the, the only approval I ever really provided was the secondary decking inside the building, uh, for storage. That's the only thing that I ever really provided a, a, a positive, uh, approval on, uh.
And would that have complied with the variance that was granted by the board of adjustment?
From what I had in my mind, that this was gonna be a, a completely internal decking in, inside the one-story twenty-four by sixteen storage building, yes, it would have complied. Um, I, when I first saw the structure, the two-story structure from Bonds Ranch Road and one fifty-six, I was kinda taken back from it. I had to go ask what this was, because I didn't, this is something that I did not recall ever being approved by, by anything with, with the city.
Do we have any pictures of what's out there?
Yes. And this is a street view. The, uh, yeah, the, one on the left is what was approved by ZBA of that, that depiction of the building, the one on the right is what's there currently.
And this is from what road?
It's Virginia Lane.
From Virginia Lane?
Yes. We have one more picture. Please, Stevens looking for it. That was the backside of this building.
So I can't see this from Virginia Lane.
Well, that, that picture's flat.
No, I'm talking about the previous pictures from Virginia Lane.
Yeah, there's an opening.
Okay.
Sorry, sorry, so this is, we have to have a full record of these proceedings? Because if there's an appeal, we have to give a verbatim transcript to the district court, so if you wanna speak, you have to come up to the mic.
Yeah, this, this picture's taken from the, the southeast corner of my lot, where there's a gap in the trees where you can see that building. But if you go north, uh, even ten feet further, you can't even see it from behind those trees, so like from my driveway, you can't even see that building.
Okay.
But yeah, there's a gap in the trees there where you can see it.
Very good.
Yeah.
Steven, can you get back into the artwork program, there's one more photo, I think.
Yeah, if you, you wanna, uh, speak, Mr. Nolan, please come up to the microphone.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, on that picture, so it sits, it sits about four hundred and fifty feet from the street. And those, those big rows of trees are maybe two hundred feet from the street. And my house is, is actually behind those trees to the right, but you can't see the house. And now if you, if you were to go south about twenty feet, you would be able to see my house there, but for the most part. From anywhere on Virginia Lane, you can't really see either of those structures except through that gap of trees right there, just 'cause they sit so far back. Where this is more visible from is Bonds Ranch. Because it's, I, because my buildings are at the very back of my lot to the west.
Understood, thank you.
Steven, was there a, a video or a picture labeled one fifty-six of you? Okay.
No, I've, I've got a question. Can you go to the photograph from the west?
Let me, let me, let me get us back on track here. Our presentations are concluded, I believe. You'll have opportunity to get into discussion to go back to these materials.
Okay.
So at this time, all presentations are concluded, I take it. Mr. Stafford, Mr. Nolan, very good. All right, let's go to item two, the public hearing. Open a public hearing to anyone who would like to speak on this issue. Ms. Montgomery, is there, do you have any, uh, sheets signed? I'll first call on them.
Yes, sir. The first one I received was from Paul Nelson.
Mr. Nelson, will you come up to the podium, state your name and your address, please?
Mayor, his testimony will also need to be sworn.
Okay.
Some bad pictures if you want to look at them.
Mr. Nelson, I need to swear you in.
Oh.
Mr. Nelson, do you swear or affirm that the testimony and/or, uh, presentation or materials you're to present or evidence is, uh, to this board will be the truth, whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Thank you.
You want to see these pictures?
If you would like for the council to see the pictures, or, excuse me, the board, it's habit. Thank you.
Uh, you know my name, I live on twenty-two eighteen Virginia, which is the lot directly south of the applicant's joint in it. That's looking from my back fence up over the property there. I've lived there for thirty-five years. I attended the Board of Adjustment meeting on, uh, March first of twenty-twenty-one. And there was a discussion, and we approved, or the board approved, a three hundred and eighty-four square foot pool house. I did not object. Uh, three hundred and eighty-four square foot little house sitting on, based on what the drawing was that I received from the Board of Adjustment, was no problem. I should have objected, because his biggest complaint was drainage. In the thirty-five years that I've lived on this property, I have mowed that property, there has never been a problem with drainage on that spot right there that you see. That's on the back of his house. That's on the, well, his pool, the, 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 the pool is sticking up there. I have had a problem in the middle of the property, because we cut and filled our lot. And every time it rains, we get seepage out of that property. It's almost like there's an underground spring underneath it. But it happens right where his pool starts to the other side of that building, about probably forty, fifty, sixty feet. So much so, that I had to put a French drain in from the middle of my property to cover it out in front and run it into the pond. That was done several years ago. We did not approve this thing. This is an invasion of our privacy. Uh, it's gonna lower my property value, I think. I'm not sure about that. But I know that it will affect the saleability of my property. If you had your choice between buying five acres with this next to you or five acres without this next to you, it would be a tough decision, I'm sure. Uh, one of the realtors that I contacted made the comment that she has sent all the comps in our neighborhood for the last year. But she made the comment that none of them have had to, oh, the hell is, excuse me, what is it? None of them have had to, none of the other houses have had anything like that to overcome. So based on what she told me, I know it will affect the saleability of my house. The structure is not aesthetically pleasing from the front of the street. If you look at the front of the building, it has the garage door on it, it has a, a door on the second floor, which I assume he's gonna put a stairway on. And the stairway is, is not supposed to be facing the street. It's about a hundred and twenty feet from our back patio. The drainage is not a problem, in my opinion. I'd like to see the engineering report on that, if anybody has it. But according to the Hazard Building Code, section four point three point five, all accessory structures shall be clearly subordinate in area, extent, and purpose to the primary structure. His primary structure is twenty-five hundred square feet. According to this Board of Adjustment letter that I got, this property here, this building here is three thousand two hundred and forty-eight square feet. Clearly, that's not subordinate in area to his primary structure. If you look at section four point three point five, they also determine the function of an accessory structure. It should be clearly incidental to the primary use structure. If you look at section four point three point five, it, in, in section F, it goes into design capa- compatibility. The applicant shall demonstrate screening methods that will be used to minimize any potential adverse effects on neighboring property. That being mine. And then four point three point six does not exceed three thousand square feet. Four point three point six F point three, a separate entrance may be provided, but it shall not be visible from any public street on elevation from any public street. The front elevation on the applicant's sheet A two clearly shows stairs to the entrance, entrance that will be clearly visible from the street. I do not consider this structure to be a basic accessory structure. What it is, it's an accessory dwelling unit. It, a pool house, especially a three hundred and forty-eight square foot pool house that was approved by the Board of Adjustment, does not have a master bedroom, a living room, another room, another bedroom, and a full kitchen. That's not a pool house, in my opinion. If you check it with Google, they'll tell you that not to be deceived, that their definition of a pool house, a pool house is not, does not inter, interject a living or guest quarter, does not include a living or guest quarter. The applicant says he has no other option to do except to add on to his house or connect this building to his house. I say he does have several other options. Number one, he built this building without a permit. I understand, I'm not real positive about that. But if he did build this building without a permit, he's in violation of the law. He's subject to a fine. But he can remove this structure or build what was approved by the Board of Adjustment. He does not have to add on to his house. He can put it back behind his building and have the same building he wants. Because the problem with the drainage is not, not, not legit. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Our next speaker?
Bob Golden.
Mr. Golden? Oh, please, please. I, I knew I didn't need to tell you that you had to state your name.
No, but he needs to be sworn in.
Oh, that's correct. Thank you, forgive me. Mr. Golden, do you swear or affirm that the testimony and evidence you're about to give this board is the truth, whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do. Bob Golden, twenty-two twenty-six White Lane, Hasslet, Texas. Good evening, Mr. Chair and members of the Hasslet zoning Board of Adjustment. I appear before you this evening to speak against the variance as submitted by the applicant. In the early part of this year, when I became aware of the construction underway at twenty-two sixteen Virginia Lane, I went back and listened to the recording of the ZBOA meeting of March first, twenty-twenty-one. Two comments were made by the applicant at that meeting, which jumped out at me. He did not refer to the proposed accessory building as a pool house. He said he simply needed to run power to an accessory building for his pool equipment. He also stated that the building would look like a dot, and that's a direct quote from the recording. I'll come back to that in a minute. I would remind you that the original variance was to put a structure forward of the house on the property, and then a building permit still needed to be submitted and approved prior to any construction. The ZBOA of March twenty-one did not approve the construction of a structure. It approved a variance for location of an accessory building as depicted on the elevation submitted as part of the package. Again, the ZBOA of March twenty-twenty-one did not approve the building, that, that, it, it was not a building permit. It was a variance to put something forward to the house line. It was not a building permit. That appears to have been a little bit of a comment. That sixteen by twenty-four, three hundred and eighty-four square foot dot, as the applicant said, has morphed into a thirty-two hundred square foot blob with a roof line that appears from the road to be higher than that of his home. And the applicant has had that constructed without a bullet, building permit. I think his comments in March of twenty-twenty-one and his actions since have shown him to be, at the very least, disingenuous. And in my mind, he's played the city to circumvent the city and build whatever he wants with or without permission. Furthermore, I think approval of this variance would set a terrible precedent for our city. Our ordinances, variances, permits, et cetera, need to be effectively managed by our city. A, a, a key point here i- is the, the Board of Adjustment did not approve the construction of a building. Included in the package with regard to the variance, which was to put something forward to the house line, was an elevation which showed a sixteen by twenty-four building, one-story building. The, the applicant has previously stated that, you know, it, the second floor i- is going to be storage. It's not going to be, but it's a two-story building. What was approved was a one-story building. As a, as, as the chair of that BOA in March of twenty-twenty-one, I can only speak for myself, I didn't vote, all five members were there, but I did participate in the conversation. In my heart, I do not think that the ZBOA would have approved a three thousand square foot building, two-story building, up, up that high on the hill. I can see that building from my house, the next street over. You can see it from the street on Virginia. I, I, I feel sorry for the individual's concern, and there's obviously some misunderstandings between Mike and the applicant. However, comma, I, I think I've made my, my points here. So thank you very much for hearing me.
Thank you. Ms. Montgomery, have other speakers?
That is all the cards that I have.
Okay, are there any others that would like, in the audience here, that would like to speak on this item? What's your question? Not, not at this, you've done your presentation. So there are none, is there anyone online? We have none online, okay? At this point, then I'll close the public hearing. Three is, item three is discussion. All right, Board, um, discussion, I-
Yes, I'd like to ask the applicant here. Uh, it's been referred to several times, you know, the second floor bit. You said it, it's just decking. You needed storage space, because you don't have attic space in your house. Looking at the picture staff currently has pulled up, uh, the large pane windows on the second floor, are those solid windows or is that sliding door?
I'm sorry, you'll have to come to the microphone.
Please ask your question again.
So on the second floor, the large windows look like, you know, seven foot or so. Are those solid windows or the sliding glass door?
That's a door.
Okay, so if that's used for storage, do you necessarily need sliding doors to go to the outside for a storage?
Well, that's the only way to get on to the balcony. So, yeah, you would need a door somehow to get to the balcony.
Okay, so you-
I mainly put the, those windows on there for aesthetic.
That's, that's the windows, that's not the door, correct?
Yeah, well, it's, yeah, it's, it's a glass door, but I put the glass door and the windows on there just so that it didn't look like, you know, a solid wall.
So you, okay, so the intent was to be able to use that balcony as entertainment?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, the balcony.
Now, the second question would be the size of this slab that was originated twenty-six by six. Looking at this photo from the right side, how far does that sixty go to the left? Is it encompass the two-story part of the building? Or does it encompass the patio cover on the left side?
The two-story is twenty-six by forty.
Okay.
And then the, on the far left on this picture is another, I guess, sixteen feet for the outdoor kitchen. Yeah. And so this is from-
Twenty-six by sixty encompasses everything from the left side, where the, I call it patio cover, to the right side, where the two-story structure-
And if this, if this had been built further west, behind my house, to not require variance, it would be more visible from White Line, which is to the west.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Board, any other questions in discussion?
I, I have a question for Mr. Stafford. Uh, Mr. Nolan said that he got a lot of green lights from you to, to proceed at certain stages. At, at what point did you realize that, hey, we gotta stop here and get a permit for, or get the variance approved?
Right. Um, but I would say the only green lights that we provided was, I did look at the foundation. Uh, I was doing a service for Mr. Nolan, uh, looking at the foundation, because concrete was so hard to get. I was there for another reason, I really can't remember why I was there. They asked me to look at the foundation, and I hadn't looked at it. The construction of the foundation, it, it was fine, there was nothing wrong with it. Um, I, I didn't measure, for whatever reason, I didn't measure it to make sure it was, uh, in compliance with, with what was approved by the board. Even though I made some, some mistake. I'll tell you that right now. I, I shouldn't even have done that without a permit being approved and paid for and, and, and moving forward. But is what it is. So a- as far as inspecting any type of, any type of structure or anything like that, that was never done.
I guess I have one, just follow-on question, especially dealing with, um, Mr. Golden's testimony.
Please go ahead.
Um, my question comes to, I guess, based upon that ZBA board, and there wa, again, it was just a variance to be going forward. There, there was never any, um, I would say, plans or building, you know, building plans until April of this year?
That's correct.
You mean plan to the, the new, like, upstairs?
Well, again, I'm looking at-
Original plans were submitted to the-
The original plans, again-
There were no plans submitted.
Yeah, again, the way-
No, the site plan of the, on page-
But that's not building. I'm making a distinction. Site plan is not building plans.
Site plan was submitted in a location.
Again, based upon what Mr. Golden had said, is the aspect that that was just a variance, just to take it in front of the house, that an actual building's plan needed to be, needed to be presented, or, and permits presented. I'm saying that there's, I, we've not seen anything that from the very beginning.
And just to clarify about point- And just to clarify about that point, was there, was there an actual building permit issued for the original pump?
No, there was not. There was, I told Mr. Nolan that I would add the building on to the pool permit. The, yeah, the pump house storage shed. But I still never received any true building permit-type plans for that building. The only thing I had was the elevations.
So that, I understand, you never issued a permit at all?
Just for the pool.
Okay, that was the question. Did you issue it? Board, do you have any other question?
I have a question. I don't have a for counsel. If we make our motion and it says here a recommendation, do we have to have, do we have to recommend one of the following options?
No, as the Board sits as a quasi-judicial body, you have the ability to define the relief that you want to grant the applicant or that you're going to deny. I will remind the Board that this is not a question about whether it's an attractive building. It is a question about, does it, well, it's a question about whether an additional variance is granted, is necessary to give the property owner a reasonable use of his property. If the property owner has a reasonable use of his property without the grant of a variance, then the community and the residents expect that the ordinances will be followed. Though variances are typically granted to relieve a hardship. That means that if I follow the regulations and the ordinances, I don't, I can't use my property in the same way that my neighbors can. So variances are not intended to be used by people who don't want to follow the rules. Variances are intended to be used by people who cannot follow the rule to get special relief so that they can have, so that they can enjoy their property as a resident or in whatever zone it's in.
Let me ask a question. Okay, going to the zoning Board of Adjustment is because the consequence of any given ordinance, in this case, an ordinance defines placement of your home and accessory buildings. And in this situation, the accessory building originally asked for was 384 square feet, and a variance had to be requested to put it in front of the primary residence because of certain issues.
Circumstances that existed on the property, and at the time of that hearing, the Board found that because of the drainage pattern in the back, the building couldn't be put back there.
This is a separate variance being asked for, as I understand. Because now that the, in the original case, you go to the ZBA because the ordinance put a hardship on a resident. In this case, it appears that the resident put a hardship on themselves. In those cases...
Self-created hardships are not considered a proper basis for the grant of a variance.
That was my question.
That's correct.
All right, then. It appears that discussion has ended. As for not, unless you have any more discussion, Board, then I'd like to entertain a motion.
That's where I was going. The aspect of, I think we have ordinances for a reason. I think based upon this and what we've heard and testimony that we've heard that I move to not approve this variance.
Motion is made not to approve this variance request. Is there a second?
I second.
There is a second. Any further discussion?
So I just want to be clear. The motion is to deny the request?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, there was clarification on it. The motion is to deny the request.
I will restate my motion. I move to deny.
All right, motion being restated. The second, is there a second agree to this thing?
I second.
Very good. All right. Is there any further discussion, Board?
Sorry, yeah, I just want to make some comments. I mean, this seems to be like mistakes on both sides. But the rules were not followed. The ordinances were not followed. There's hardship on your adjoining property owner. So if there was nothing against this, I would probably vote for this. But in this case, seems like this was self-imposed. The rules were not followed, even though you got the okay, maybe some green lights for Mr. Thetford. But it also puts hardship now on your neighbor's property. So in my opinion, it's very difficult to vote on this, but I'm going to vote again.
All right, any further discussion?
My question was that after the motion is made, then when the next steps are provided or we'll come back to the Board, we will go back to the corrections are need to be made?
So it depends on how the applicant chooses to move forward, what the process will be.
I believe the applicant has various choices. And so that would be the applicant's, depending on how this vote turns out. Applicant has choices. Is there any further discussion on the matter? All right, then I will call for the vote. Board member Morrow?
Aye.
Board member Nahera?
Aye.
Board member?
Aye.
You're new. Sorry. Thank you. Board member Rick?
Aye.
Board member Ford?
Aye.
Okay. Motion passed as 5-0. The request is denied. Yes, ma'am. Please approach. If you would state your name and address.
My name is Shanti Nolan. I live at 2216 Virginia Lane. I'm Jason Nolan's wife. And regardless of the outcome of this, what do we call it, a hearing? We're all human beings here and we're neighbors. And none of our neighbors came to us directly. We did not know how you're feeling. And I want to make this publicly known that we're kind people who can have conversations outside of hearings in front of committees. And had we been able to have a conversation too, we may have been able to come up with solutions prior to it being all the way right there at this point where now it's going to be extreme measures for tearing down or doing some other kind of modification. I also want to speak to the comment of my husband being disingenuous.
Sorry, I've let this go. However, your opportunity to speak is to this Board, not to those votes out there.
So that, and thank you. When you come, you're addressing the Board. And please continue.
Thank you. My husband was not disingenuous. Our intentions were not to skim over the law or the rules or the ordinances. My husband, we've built several buildings together, and he's always been to the book, doing things, getting approval, and doing things the way he thought. And I know that ignorance is not an excuse, though we did not know. And I want it just to be known by our neighbors, since we have to live together, and by you, since we live here in the city with you, that our intention is to be good citizens here and to also build beautiful things. Our house is beautiful. That is an eyesore because it's been there like that for however long it's been there. But as a complete thing, it would be incredibly beautiful building because he is an incredibly creative human being. The pool that we built is beautiful. We intend to bring beauty and upliftment to the city. And I apologize for mistakes that we have made. That's just what I want to say. I just want people to know we can actually communicate as human beings and not go behind each other's back to create problems. We're here and we're willing to talk. And I hope that moving forward, our neighbors and you guys and whatever we need to do, can know that we're approachable and we want to work with you. And I'm incredibly sad at the decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nolan. All right, Board, before we move to the next item, I should take a small break, about eight minutes, bring us back at 8:50 PM. And so we will have a break in the, tonight's meeting, so 8:50 PM. Zoning Board of Adjustments, back order. Open session, 8:53 PM, May 25, 2022. All members of the board are present. Do we have our next item? Is hold a public hearing and consider a variance request from Section 4.3 or excuse, 4.3.6 of Chapter 14 of the zoning ordinance to allow for a size increase to 4,225 square foot metal shop that includes a 1,625 square foot covered front patio from the already approved 2,600 square feet shop that was built in front of the primary structure of a residential lot described as Lot 10, Block 4, U-White Estates within the city of Hasslet, Texas, more commonly known as 2219 White Lane. Is the applicant present? Or is the question present?
Yes, I am present. I am present.
Do you have audio or video?
No, sir, I don't. I'm actually out of the country and I'm strictly on Wi-Fi in this body. Sorry about that.
Okay, very good. And state your name again, please.
My name is Joseph Matthew Bosco.
Very good, thank you. All right, we're going to a presentation. Mr. Mike Thetford, our building official, we start the presentation. And Mr. Thetford, I need to swear you in. Mr. Thetford, do you swear or affirm that the presentation and evidence that you'll be presenting to this board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do, sir.
Thank you. And sir, will you mute your mic? We're getting music in the background.
Thank you, Chairman, members of the board. Okay, so the applicant, Joseph Bosco, resides at 2219 White Lane. He applied for a variance to construct a 60 by, a 65 by 40 metal building shop, shopport of the primary structure. This is the only viable option for the placement of the building, since the set that filled on the property was in the way. He could not put that building behind the structure. He did request a variance. The Zoning Board of Adjustments did approve the variance on March 27, 2022. Following the board's March 7 variance approval, the applicant increased the size of the building to roughly 4,225 square foot by adding a 1,625 square foot cover patio without formal written approval from the city. In accordance with the adopted Building Code, Local Amendment R2002, building square footage shall be defined as the combined area of the building under the roof measured in square feet. Patio cover attached to the building, in accordance with the City's zoning code, the maximum size of each accessory structure shall be 3,000 square feet. In addition, additional detached accessory buildings beyond the size limitations shall only be approved with a specific use permit. In accordance with Section 2.5.5 of the Zoning Ordinance, the Zoning Board of Adjustments must find that the criteria of Local Government Code 11.009A3 are met. The criteria analysis are as follows. Variants may not be granted to relieve a self-created personal hardship as this applicant, without a permit, constructed the foundation for a much larger building than the one requested and approved by the board on March 7. Any perceived hardship is therefore completely self-created, and a financial hardship would flow for the applicant's own legal, illegal act. The spirit of the ordinance is not being observed. As already stated, the previously BOA-approved 2,600 square foot shop, which met the spirit of the ordinance and was considered to be aesthetically appealing, however, added patio cover replaces the building at 1,200, 25 square foot over the maximum allowed size of accessory building. Increased size of the building does not meet the spirit of the ordinance and would impose a significantly greater impact on the property, visual impact on the property. With that report, I'll answer any questions you may have.
All right.
I would just, if that concludes your presentation, I would like to hear from the applicant and sir, if you would come back online.
Yes, sir, I'm here. Sorry about the background noise. This is the only place the reception works, sir.
Can you turn the music off?
No, sir, I can't. I'm in a lobby where I get service at, sir. I'm out of the country. This is the only place my phone will stay steady.
But if you find a quiet place, please.
If I, I'll try, but if I lose you guys, give me a minute to call back, sir. I've lost it. I've dropped the call about 13 times.
Fine. Thank you.
Is that any better?
That's better, thank you.
Thank you, sorry about that.
If you start to repeat again. I need to swear you in.
I believe the statute requires that the board hear a request for a variance within 60 days of the date of the application. However, if the applicant was unable to be here and would like to request that it be tabled, I think you'd have the authority under the statute to do that beyond the 60-day timeframe, if you so.
How long has it been since he made the request?
It hasn't been 60 days.
April 5.
April 5.
May 5.
So June 5 approximately would be the 60 days, approximately.
Yes, but he could, he could agree to a different date, because he's not here. It would be for his benefit.
Is he back online yet? So we need him back online to request this.
Yes, you would. Otherwise, I believe you'd have to act this. Did he file any written files or documents?
Okay. Well, I intend to wait a maximum 15 minutes to establish reliable communication. Otherwise, I have to count him as not present. So it's 9:02 right now, at 9:17 will be the maximum wait time.
Because the statute doesn't have that 60-day requirement, you'd be free to table it if you choose, or you may act this.
Hello? Hello?
Mr. Bosco, is that you?
Yes, this is Joseph Bosco. I'm sorry, I went too far and my phone dropped again, sir.
Very good. I want to, so it appears that you have not reliable communication right now, or connectivity.
Actually, sir, I'm on a hard line now. I just paid to use this phone, sir, so I think I'm okay for a few minutes.
A few minutes?
Yes, well, I mean, as long as they let me talk on it.
Okay, here, I wanted to offer this up. You can, right now, you can request that we hear this at another date when you are in country and available.
Yeah, that'd be great, sir.
Communication again, I'm going to close the meeting.
Sir, the only issue I have is that you, that it holds up other areas for me getting a permit as well, sir, which is where I would like to address it. I mean, I would love to get it handled if you guys are willing, and I'll do my best to do what I can.
Okay, then, we'll proceed. If we lose communication, again, I am going to close the meeting.
Okay, yes, sir, thank you.
All right, then. So Mr. Thetford has made his presentation, and sir, I need to swear you in.
Yes, sir.
And make your presentation.
Okay.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony and materials that you will be presenting at this board is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes, sir.
Very good. Please proceed.
Okay, uh, yes, I, I just, um, what Mr. Thetford was, said was correct, sir. Uh, I just, when, when, when my girlfriend and I planned to construct this, uh, this overhang, um, it's, it's just a top cover only. I wasn't aware that it accounted for additional square footage on my building. Uh, not his fault, not your fault, my mistake. Um, my hardship on it, sir, is just that, uh, the additional cost for me to remove it, uh, metal, concrete, uh, things of that nature, sir. But, um, I was hoping that just presenting my mistake and, and speaking with the board and, um, trying to come to a reasonable agreement, um, to avoid that situation, um, is why I'm here, sir.
Understood. Uh, is, is that, uh, the, is that your presentation? Is that, I know that the board members.
Yes, sir, I mean, that, that's my hardship on it. Um, you know, sir, uh, Mr. Thetford made a, a statement that it, um, I guess changes the overall view of the whole building. Uh, it sounded like it, it, he stated it in a negative way, which I don't agree with. Um, the building overall aesthetically looks beautiful. Um, I don't know or not if I have anyone who disagrees or wants me to take down the overhang, uh, here to testify against me tonight, but, um, that's just one thing I would like to add as well, sir, that's all.
All right, very good. So is that, uh, is that your presentation?
Uh, yes, sir.
All right, board members, do you have any questions for, uh, Mr. Bosco or even Mr. Thetford on this?
I have a question.
Please.
So, Mr. Bosco, are the, um, is the, is it just metal R-panel that's constructing the overhang?
Uh, yes, ma'am. So what it is, is it's, it's a four-by-four metal off the, welded to the shop. It comes off the front and 25 foot of length to the north, and it stretches 65 foot total east and west, uh, the length of the building. And what it provides is a, an under parking area. Uh, I store my goose food, my duck food, uh, my pig food and things under there as well to not get wet. Um, and it has no sides, just the top R-panel. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and it's just constructed with sheet metal screws?
Uh, yes, ma'am.
Your knowledge, okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Chairman, please. Uh, Mr. Thetford, if they were to, um, if this has a foundation on it, but if he were to remove just the cover on that, would he also have to take out part of the foundation?
No.
I have a question.
Please.
Mr. Thetford, if, if it is removed, um, can the post stay? The frame stay? Is that something that only the top has to come off? If, I'm just saying, if later down the road or, I mean, anything, can the frame stay or do they have to be also removed?
It's just the covered portion of it. I don't.
Let's, let me, let me ask this, is that, is, there's more to a structure than just a cover or frame. It's a frame and a cover that constitute structure, and that's what was being granted. You're building a structure.
Correct.
I'm feeling clear. So would the post have to be removed as well? At least these two in the front? Or maybe it was three?
Is it a structure?
It's all a, a structure. So the, the ordinance says that the covered portion is what brings this over the, the allowed square footage.
So would they have to be removed or could the, I mean, could they just cut off awning, just taken off and the frame and the post stay? Or does the post have to go?
I don't know that would, aesthetically, speaking, I don't know that we're getting what, you know, I, I think it's gonna look worse with just posts out there.
Let me ask this, so I've read these variances granted, and it was aesthetically pleasing. So would that be aesthetically pleasing?
Well, I, I thought the concern there was over the 3,000 allotted.
Well, there, when I go back to the variant, variant, when I go back to the previous, and that's our measure, is the previous. It was quoted aesthetically pleasing.
So there's really two issues here. One is when he put up the covered portion where you see the vehicle, he exceeded not only the variance that was granted by the board, but he also exceeds the 3,000 square feet allowed by the ordinance without a special use permit. So he'd have to go get, even if you granted a variance, he would have to go get an SUP for this structure. The, the, the metal poles were not, I don't believe, shown on the site plan that the board considered when it approved the variance. And I don't recall the motion, but if it was made, subject to compliance with the site plan and the elevations, those poles would not have been shown at that time.
All right, uh, with regard to the presentation, knowing that we will go into have discussion, should we, uh, I'd like to conclude the presentation unless you have some questions relative to that, the board, do you have any? Okay, if not, we'll go and move on to the public hearing. Open the public hearing, uh, at 9:16 PM, uh, for anyone who'd like to speak to this matter. Uh, Ms. Montgomery, do we have anyone listed, uh, cards filled out or anything?
No, sir, and it does not look like anybody's in the chat requesting to speak.
All right, and we have no one in the chambers? So there are no, uh, no one requesting to speak? So I'll close the public hearing at 9:16 PM, and we'll go into discussion. Board, it's yours.
Chairman, I'm Jack White.
Yes, sir.
Back to the original site plan that was issued, and I just want clarification. On the original structure, was there an awning shown on that site?
No, sir, that's, that's the reason we're here.
Thank you.
I have a question, there. Uh, Mike, does he still, what about the, well, that has to be.
No, it's just by word that, that could, that could.
All right, uh, board, if there's no other discussion, I will move to item four, our consideration action. And, uh, of course, if you want to discuss, you can further at, at your, at your pleasure. Uh, if there is none, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion. I recommend denial of a variance as presented.
Motion is made, uh, recommending, or a motion is made for denial as presented. Is there a second?
I'll say.
There is a second. All right, all in favor? Signify raising your hand, saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0. The, uh, variance is denied. Okay, well, we will have, we will have to inform the applicant of the action taken. And, uh, Mr. Thetford is building official, you'll do that.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Well, the board's decision will be entered into, uh, you'll have to sign, uh, the board's decision, and that'll be, that'll.
Come from the city secretary.
That's correct.
And then now we go to Mr. Thetford. We, we will send it directly to the applicant?
Um, I would think Shannon would probably send it directly.
Okay, very good. All right, board, that's what we'll do.
You can do that.
Uh, item five, uh, or excuse me, item four is executive session, and, uh, we have no need of executive session. Item five, consider and act on any items from executive session, there are none. Uh, item six is adjournment, do I have a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, I move to adjourn.
Motion is made to adjourn, is there a second? We can stay a little longer if we want. Motion is made to, sorry, it was motion made to adjourn and seconded. All in favor, say aye. Very good, motion passes 5-0. It is 9, it is 9:20 PM.